Well, good morning, everyone. I will call to order the August 3, 2023, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. County Council Stephen Madcor. Clerk to the board today is Everett Wild. Role call, Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for the meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will instruct you how to do that when the time is right. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be used in this business meeting. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time, and feel free to fill out a blue card and put it in the basket. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair. First, the first two items are reading and adoption of previously approved land use ordinances. Item one, adoption of a previously approved comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance amendments, ZDO-283, minor and time-sensitive comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance amendments. Stephen Madcor, county council, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. Stephen Madcor, county council. This board previously heard on July 12 some proposed changes to the county's comprehensive plan and the zoning and development ordinance, otherwise known as the ZDO. The board voted five-nothing to move those forward to this particular session, where we would formalize it. If the board passes it today, they would be effective 30 days from now, September 5. And what they are, there's a number of housekeeping and streamlining amendments to the comp plan and the ZDO. One allows public restrooms up at government camp area. We talked about that one. One allows for modification of the forest template dwelling test, which is more in alignment with state law. One allows for an extension of the period for non-conforming uses and reviving those. During the whole COVID epidemic, there were some issues with those things. Once a youth sits idle, this extends that time period. There's a lot of record change, which is relatively significant. It changes county law, which has been in existence for a number of years. It again aligns it with state law. It is a proposal to streamline the habitat conservation area processes, no longer requiring design review of dwellings in industrial areas and commercial areas, allowing for electronic signatures on applications, reducing a lot of printed paper requirements as well, and making other minor, non-substantive changes to the ZDO. And so these were all proposals that were presented to the board on July 12. You said yes to all of them. Mind you, that one of them differs from what the planning commission recommended, and that was they had some issue with the forest template test, but staff recommended you go forward with the alignment with state law, and that is what you voted on in July 12. Any questions? Happy to take them.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any qualifying questions or any additional comments? I will entertain a motion. It's in your script.
I move, will you read? ZDO-283 by title only.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved, we read, ZDO-283 by title only. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Yes, Commissioner West?
No.
Everett, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Clerk, would you please read the ZDO by title only?
Ordinance number ZDO-283, an ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and amending sections 201, 202, 315, 316, 317, 401, 406, 407, 510, 513, 602, 706, 709, 806, 827, 837, 839, 845, 1,005, 1,006, 1,007, 1,009, 1,010, 1,012, 1,013, 1102, 1105, 1107, 1203, 1206, 1307, and 1310 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Chair, I move that we adopt ordinance ZDO-283 as previously approved at the July 12, 2023, land use hearing.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved, we approve ordinance ZDO-283 as previously approved at the January 12, 23, land use hearing, and Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner West.
Sometimes these land use county business gets kind of wonky and sounds super bureaucratic. But what's exciting about this to me is that this change, I can only think of the family that came and testified before us that because of bureaucratic mishaps was unable to achieve their dream on the property they bought in the Malala area. Today, Clackamas County is helping that family make that right and achieve their dream by streamlining the bureaucratic process and doing better government. I can only just still hear their testimony as they came before us. They were brave in how they shared their whole experience, and I'm excited for them today because today we're making that right.
Thank you, Commissioner West. You know, I too, back when I was in the legislature, I worked on a lot of land use issues. That was a long time ago. But I'm very heartened to know that we are returning property rights to the people who need them the most, and that's in our rural areas. And it's just very, very good. I'm a big promoter of private property rights, and this is a wonderful step forward for Clackamas County. Any other comments? Seeing none. Everett, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Next is another reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance. Item two, adoption of previously approved zoning and development ordinance amendments, ZDO-287, zoning and development ordinance amendments related to places of worship. Stephen Madcor, county council, will also present.
Thank you again, Gary. Commissioners, you heard this last week on July 26, and this is an amendment to the zoning and development ordinance to allow churches and houses of worship in the majority of zoning districts within the county. It is intended to comply with federal law, the Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act, which says thou cannot discriminate against churches and houses of worship in your zoning code. So it is actually like liberating the zoning code to a certain extent and allowing these houses of worship and churches and similar uses within a variety of zones within unincorporated Clackamas County. And again, if you were to pass this today, as you did on July 26, it'd be effective on September 5. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions or comments on this? Thank you very much. I think this is also an action taken by this board for religious freedom in Clackamas County, not only for the allowance of this church to continue to build and expand, but we also took an action on allowing a clinic in a church, and that was over a year ago. And it's very heartening to me that we are able to do things like this to establish religious freedom and the ongoing perpetuation of these churches being able to provide services to a certain sector of the public where the government necessarily does not, or cannot, or people aren't willing to do that. Thank you very much. My microphone just did something different. Did you notice that?
We did a volume.
Okay. Seeing no further comments. Everett, would you please take the poll?
Wait a minute. We need a motion.
Oh, no, I need a...
You need a motion.
Please, Mr. Scholl.
I move, we read ZDO-287 by title only.
Second.
Thank you. I got ahead of myself. Commissioner Scholl has moved, we read ZDO-287 by title only. Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Now, Everett, we can take the poll.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Would the clerk please read the ZDO by title only?
Ordinance number ZDO-287, an ordinance amending sections 315, 316, 317, 510, 511, 513, 702, 804, and 1015 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move, we adopt ZDO-287 as previously approved at the July 26, 2023, land use hearing.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved, we adopt ZDO-287 as previously approved at the July 26, 2023, land use hearing, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Everett, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you very much. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the consent agenda. Everett, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, under elected officials. Item number one, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under county administration, item one, approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with the Clackamas 800 Radio Group to support emergency response systems and to fund emergency response projects. Grant value is $2 million. Funding is through county allocated American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. Under juvenile, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for providing funding for juvenile crime prevention basic services and diversion services. Agreement value is $2,105,315 for two years. Funding through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. Under health, housing, and human services, item one, approval of a revenue grant agreement from the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care to continue coordinated enrollment services for families eligible for publicly funded preschool programs. Agreement value is $390,500 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care. No county general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon for the operation of community developmental disability services for Clackamas County. Anticipated agreement value is $29,394,999 for two years. Funding is through federal Medicaid funds and state general funds. No county general funds are involved. Under transportation and development, item one, approval of an annual intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the fiscal year 2324 Annual Waste Reduction and Recycle at Work Program. Total revenue is $764,216 for one year. Funding through the regional system fees collected on tons of waste disposed in the Metro Service District. No county general funds are involved. That's the end of the list.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off the consent agenda? Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has moved, we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Everett, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the consent agenda for the Clackamas County Development Agency. Tony, I'm sorry, Everett, my apologies. Everett, will you please read the consent agenda?
Development Agency Consent Agenda, one item, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of right-of-way easements and fee property and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions with development agency for the Monroe Street Improvements Project. Right-of-way budget is $1 million. Funding is through the Clackamas County Development Agency. No county general funds are involved. That's the end of the list.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Schrader.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Everett, please take the poll.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Savas.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of our consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be kept as part of the public record. I will now open the public meeting. For testimony, in-person testimony is first. Anybody in the room wishing to testify, please grab a blue card, stick it in the basket, and Everett will pick them up. First person, Rick Clausen, please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Patrick Clayson.
Clayson.
Clayson. Yes, Madam Chair. I'm representing ASME 350-4, Water and Environment Services. I'm a citizen of Oregon City. This is my fourth week here. I'm just here to continue our conversation. It's a long conversation that I get to have, three minutes at a time each week. Madam Chair, you said last week that you all were available for personal one-on-one meetings to have conversations when you were addressing the other members that are there. That is not necessarily applicable to myself and my current situation. Two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago, I did put out a request to meet with each member of this board individually to have this conversation. Commissioner West, your office was the only one that reached back to me. You cordially declined, citing the ongoing negotiations. I can understand and respect that. You did say that you'd be open to talk to us after negotiations were over. I would like to have that conversation. I think that we do important work, and I want to properly represent the work that my membership does. Two weeks ago, Commissioner Savas, you stated that you weren't sure that this was the appropriate place to have these conversations. However, this three minutes is the only place that I have an opportunity to address the board. The idea of the cost of living adjustments that I'm here to speak about pertain to recruitment and retention of high-quality employees that do high-quality work for this county. This county used to be a landing point in which other municipalities lost their senior workers to us, where people wanted to end up in their career was here. We are now a springboard where people come to start their careers, gain a little bit of knowledge, and then spring off to other municipalities and take all the knowledge that we train them up to, to those municipalities. The idea of Clackamas County losing that experience and that work and that investment in the workers that you have put in, that the ratepayers have invested into training those workers, isn't acceptable to me. It shouldn't be acceptable to the citizens of this county, and we should attain to have a goal of recruiting from other municipalities to us, to bring workers to this county and to bring their knowledge here. And we can only do that if the employees that work here have a living wage that is congruent with being able to raise a family in the community that they are dedicated to serving. The service that they provide is essential and provides clean, safe waterways that we all recreate in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate Patrick Clayson coming forward. He is the president of the ASME Union. And for further edification of the folks in the room, this contract was settled, the union agreed to the contract negotiation. It took a year. We settled it at the end of last year. And I believe the Board of Commissioners quite generously honored their request of a 4.5% COLA increase over three years, which at the time, and probably still today, is more than our generous taxpayers are giving Clackamas County in the form of property taxes. Stephen Madcor, would you like to explain why we really don't comment during the middle of contract negotiations and how we got to this place today?
There's state law Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act that prohibits direct dealing when during negotiations. We have labor negotiators assigned by the board, that is Eric Serra, Heather Pedersen, Evelyn Minor Lawrence, and other people for our various bargaining units. So it's not the board's bargaining, it is your representatives', and we try not to do it publicly. We try to do it in a labor negotiation context.
Yes, thank you. And for the record, we generously gave 4.5 because we knew interest rates are rising. However, the union has come back and want 8.4% increase, and they know our answer to that. Commissioner West.
Thank you. I know it's not easy to come in public and talk to us every week, and I respect that. I'm going to just give you my reasoning for declining the meeting, because I would just be the same thing as what we're doing right here but privately, because I just can't talk to you openly about it, and it's just not legal, as you heard. It is not a matter of not wanting to have more discussion with you and being available to you. It's just a matter of state law and having to adhere to that, because that's the process we have to adhere to. You're more than welcome to... I just felt like I'd be nodding in our meeting as I listened to you, and I don't want that to be perceived as disrespectful. It's just the situation, and that's the only reason why I did not take that meeting. But thank you again for sharing your concerns with us, and you have every right to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I just want to just ask legal counsel a question. There's nothing, knowing that the law basically prohibits us from having direct negotiations, you know, especially on the dais, obviously, but direct dealings is through those agents. Is there anything that precludes, you know, Mr. Clayson or the ASME Union from sending us something directly in writing?
No.
And I think that was my recommendation here a couple, few weeks ago. So you still have that option. Obviously, you're free to come here and continue for, you know, for weeks on end, if you like, but that's another way of getting a communication to us. So we're just going to abide by the law, and we appreciate it. I echo the comments that Commissioner West made. They're quite appropriate. I think we all agree with that.
Thank you very much. More communication. Charlie Chu, please come forward. Your name and your area of residence, and you have three minutes. Good morning.
My name is Charlie Chu. I'm from the city of Milwaukee. Thank you for this opportunity to express my feelings on the closure of Clackamas County's Equity and Inclusion Office and the defunding of the DEI budget. My name is Charlie Chu, and I am a board member of the Gladstone School District and a resident of this county. I believe that the defunding of the Equity and Inclusion Office is a terrible mistake that doubles down on the institutional hemigeminy and bad governance. It is appalling to witness an all-white Board of County Commissioners complain about the expense and supposed politics of equity and inclusion while we're all standing here on stolen indigenous land, living in a country that has an aggressive and violent history of affirmative action for white people since it was colonized. The Equity and Inclusion Office is, to my understanding, a small administrative body that is there to ensure that we are applying our community resources in an anti-discriminatory fashion through necessary diligence, so we are not merely benefiting those with privilege and power. Just because you may feel tired about hearing about race, gender, and so-called immutable traits does not mean that the issues around equity and inclusion suddenly cease to matter when you mistakenly believe they are no longer benefits to you. Unlike Ben West's assessment, it is not some great liberal conspiracy or wokeism or whatever catchphrase engineered to demonize, dismiss, and divide. In spite of Commissioner West's attempt at right-wing dog whistles, equity and inclusion are merely efforts at creating a fair application and distribution of community resources to meet need. We don't need this all-white board advocating against DEI while attempting to rationalize victimhood and imagined oppression for white constituents that are wholly unearned. What we need here is responsible governance, not coded bigotry, condescension, and demagoguery. Fiscally, my understanding is that the entire DEI budget is about $830,000 per year, which equals 3.5 FTEs in operational costs. I read on Clackamas County's website that the salary for individual city commissioners sits at $125,000 per year, with a slight bump for the chair. If we are so concerned about budgetary constraints, I invite the Commissioners to consider a small temporary pay cut to see if we can allocate some of those monies towards maintaining the work of this office. Finally, I'd like to underscore something that Commissioner Savas pointed out, that for the Equity and Inclusion Office, their mission is guided by both Title II and Title VI federal laws around anti-discrimination. Defunding efforts towards diversity, equity, and inclusion are an irresponsible administrative action that leaves the county vulnerable to potential litigation. County Administrator Schmidt may attempt trying to redistribute these efforts within the rest of county operations, but it's ultimately hard to believe that this will be truly effective without meaningful focus and backing. I believe defunding the DEI budget is not only a divisive act of partisan posturing, it could lead to dire fiscal consequences and more financial waste, something this county cannot afford.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is Gus Bedwell. Please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
One second, sorry. Thank you.
Who's your partner's name?
Chair Smith, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Gus Bedwell, and I am a resident of Almsville, Oregon. As a member of the military veteran community, I am here to testify of the positive impacts diversity, equity, and inclusion have on the work that I do with my community and my community as a veteran. One example is how, for how far we have come on behalf of the LGBTQ veteran community. For those who don't know, just a few years ago, openly gay and lesbian individuals could not serve in the military. Those who did serve had to do it secretly. Unfortunately, if found out and/or even suspected, they were dishonorably discharged from the service, thus ruining their military careers and barring them from veteran benefits. Worse yet, many of them were combat and/or highly decorated service members. As an Army sergeant from the 1990s, I never understood how we could ever treat any service member that way. As a veteran advocate, I've had the unfortunate and heartbreaking task of explaining to those same individuals that they are not considered veterans, all because of who they love. Fortunately now, though, due to DEI work within the federal and state VA systems and Department of Defense, those discriminatory policies and practices have been rewritten and abolished. I can now help those same individuals get recognition for their service. I also have other examples of... this message, so I leave you with one thought, and that is this question for all of you to consider. How can you all say you support veterans, but yet work so hard to devalue and defund the DEI office and the work from the county that has proven to eliminate barriers to allowing all those who served the ability to have their service to this country be solely recognized? Thank you.
You still have 40 seconds.
I'm good, thank you.
You can send an email if you don't feel that you have enough time, if you need more further documentation for us, you can do that.
I would be glad. And I am open at any time, as a veteran, to discuss any of these matters with anybody who is interested.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Up next, Christine Kennedy. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Christine Kennedy.
Would you mind pulling the microphone closer so we can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Christine Kennedy, I'm a resident of Lake Oswego. I've lived in Clackamas County for almost nine years, and I'm here today to speak to the Commissioners and to Administrator Schmidt and to General Counsel Madcor about the issues about equity and inclusion. I listened very carefully to the meeting on Tuesday, listened again on my own, and I just would like to say that I really respect Commissioner, or County Administrator Schmidt. I've testified in front of this group before, I've seen a lot of changes over the years. Unfortunately, what I saw the other day, Chair Smith, was allowing some very highly partisan comments by the Commissioners. And I thought that we were a nonpartisan board. Commissioners Scholl and West both made statements that were highly critical of the performance of a current office, and then challenged the very foundations of what inclusion, equity, I'm not addressing affirmative action, I heard what you said about the Supreme Court decision, and from my perspective, Commissioners West, as soon as you made the comment that anybody who believes in DEI is a left-wing activist, you lost me. We're supposed to be a community, we're supposed to be a county, we want to attract people to our county to work, we want to have a healthy county. That's what I testified about before, was the whole issue around vaccines, and we treated each other like enemies. Why are we doing this in our country? Why is all this misrepresentation and manipulation become, Commissioner Scholl, why has that become our go-to? This is about inclusion, it's about compassion, it's about not making people into the other, and that's exactly what this is happening. It's, it's a debate about how do we treat people? We have to follow the law, there's requirements, we have to do that. Let's just be a little bit nicer to each other and not make each other into enemies. That's my request.
Thank you. Up next, Patty Boyd, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Councilors and Chair. Thank you for your time. I'm speaking on the equity and inclusion issue.
Ma'am, would you pull the microphone closer?
I am not speaking loud enough, I guess, is that better?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I've lived in Milwaukee for thirty, over 30 years. I've worked in private and public agencies in the area, and who you see in front of you is not really who I am with my experience. I am, choose your word, Caucasian, white. My family is not, my extended family is not. We include a variety of people of color. The issue with the equity and, equity division, we have, as a family, areas of Clackamas County we can't go to, it's not safe. We have had incidents of being followed by police for no reason. Our house has been egged. I have a cheat sheet because I knew I would get off track. We have been unable to access loans. I know specifically, in one instance, my husband was totally discarded, and I was the one that was given the paperwork. And things have been said to us from the county, from people who work for the county that are disgraceful in my mind, and if they aren't said, they are actions. Diversity and equity has to be brought forward to stop these things. They're still going on. I still sit in a restaurant with my husband, and I'm the last one to be served. Sometimes we have to get a different server, and they get tipped very well. My daughter years ago said she let her ears freeze off before she wore a hoodie around here because she'd get shot. She had driving while black instruction. This is not okay, we need to move forward, we need these programs to help. I will say it's gotten a little better in Clackamas County. Years ago, there were things we wouldn't even do at all. I'd like to leave you with, from my perspective, these are my experiences, my family's experiences. Go home, go about your usual business, but think about being careful about every single thing you do, particularly in public. That's what my family has to do. They have to be careful, they have to be aware, because they're not accepted, and that's what diversity and inclusion is. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Sonia Welch, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I, my name is Sonia Welch, I live in Oregon City, and today I want to talk about DEI. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I worked for several corporations that had monthly DEI training. It was very rigorous and very painfully time-consuming and repetitive. If you're familiar with the programs that you go through, they give situations, scenarios, stories about conflict within the workplace or elsewhere. Many of these stories depict certain classes, certain races, as having specific customs or different cultural customs or beliefs that may not be practiced with everybody within that ethnic background. I have seen more conflict result, actually, in some of these programs, because sadly, people will make assumptions about someone based on that criteria, which may not even be the case. There was an interesting article written in the New York Times a few months ago, if anybody's seen it, and Jesse Single points out that the DEI training often seems geared more towards sparking a revolutionary understanding of race relations than solving organizations from specific problems. Sadly, a lot of these depictions put people in a position of either being the oppressed or the oppressor. Billions of dollars are spent on this, $70,000 a month? Are you kidding me? That is insane. What you could do with that money, most people can't even fathom what that is, with the cost of gas, groceries, everything that we're encountering today. And I could tell you, for the last five years I had done these programs, I haven't seen anything improve. Has anybody seen an improvement with unity? I think there's been more division, and I'm sad that this hasn't worked, but please, please, I encourage you to find other ways to spend these, these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Colleen Hamilton. Colleen Hamilton. There you are. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Colleen Hamilton, I live in Oregon City, and you may oftentimes see my name, Colleen Hamilton Cronley. I'm going to speak about the DEI program here in the county. My granddaughter and I were riding in the car the other day, and she said, Grandma, it must have been fun growing up when you did. I replied, yes, it was very fun, and we could go and do a lot of things with anyone and not be afraid. She replied, this world today is crazy. I could not help but feel sad for her, because she is right, the world today is mixed up and crazy. You see, back in the days when I grew up in Yumitella County, Hermiston to be exact, we did not need government telling us how to behave. That is something our parents, our church, and our society taught. We had good rules of life, in fact, they were part of the golden rules. Be kind, play with everyone, hard work makes you strong, be wise, help those who cannot help themselves, treat others like you want to be treated, and remember, God loves you. The government's DEI program seems to cause more trouble than it solves. By its own definitions, it divides we, the people. Diversity, the government definition, includes groups you want included, and because of the past leaves out the other groups. Equity, government definition, gives everyone the same outcome whether they have worked for it or not. Inclusion, government definition, includes special treatment for a protected class. Now who is the protected class? And who decides that? In fact, the DEI philosophy and the programs that are built around DEI are further dividing our county, state, and nation, and with my work, our schools. DEI is moving us backwards before the days when Martin Luther King spoke those meaningful words about the quality of our character. We do not need a government expenditure of nearly a million dollars for this DEI program that promotes a divisive agenda. Yes, there are many in the audience and in our county who are supported by the money the DEI program puts into their pockets or programs. That is not what is important. What is important is to use programs that unite our county and do not further divide it. We have had enough division the last few years. Let's take a stand in Clackamas County and say, no more division, and build a county that betters our state and works for all of our people. Please stop the nonsense and vote no on the DEI program. Use county funding in better places. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I still have more cards here, but if anybody has arrived and not filled out a card who wishes to testify, please go ahead and do that. Everett, I see there's more cards in the basket, thank you. Up next is Karen Cook, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm from Oregon City, my name is Karen Cook. I really appreciate that you are here, being servants of the people, because that's what you were elected to do, and I'm sure you're well aware of that. I appreciate some of the comments from Mark Scholl and Ben West and Paul Savis and stuff I did listen yesterday online. I don't have much to say, so I won't take up a lot of your time, but I would like to point out for yourselves and for the audience, that I do believe all men are created equal, and I do believe there is only one race, the human race. And when did we start thinking we were all different, when we all bleed red? It doesn't make sense to spend a ton of money to prove that we are different. We are not different, we have different interests, we have different religions and beliefs, we have many different ideologies, but as humans, we do need to follow the golden rule, and I don't see the reason for all of the animosity that you can definitely see coming off of some people. So it is time to turn the corner. As a citizen, I do not support spending money, this kind of money, on DEI. It would be better off used for maybe repairing some of our roads that are not looking that great these days. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Jacqueline Arndt, Jacqueline Arndt, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Jacqueline Arndt, Beaver Creek. DEI is now a bureaucratic industry, from college campuses to corporate HR departments and from entertainment to government. According to Forbes, business is spending, the spending on DEI has just skyrocketed. I would like to see more money, the money spent for people with disabilities. According to a report, DEI staff listed by universities, that it totaled 4.2 times the number of staff were assigned to a, to a DEI than were assigned to assist students with disabilities and to help them receive reasonable accommodations as required by law. DEI is affirmative action. It was created to replace affirmative action. We have the politicization of all possible social identities, which includes the proliferation of new identities for the purpose of political activation. In other words, all identities must be understood as either an oppressor or the oppressed, and all social differences among identities must be interpreted as resulting from political oppression. Are there more white or Asian doctors than black ones? This must be due to racism. Are there more men working in construction than women? This must be due to sexism, and so on. DEI is divisive. DEI is not inclusion, it is a divisive ideology. DEI pushes favor on some demographic groups to the detriment of others. I have a current example. Kevin Dahlgren, who works in getting the homeless off the streets of Portland, he reported that the white homeless individuals can die on our streets without medical attention because the first served are chosen by their skin color. A white woman actually lost her legs below the knees. His website is truthonstreets.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Mark Reekseker, please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Mark Reekseker, Oregon City. I just want to let the Commissioners know that I'm a newly-elected PCP member, but what you probably don't know is that a lot of the people who are also PCP members in this room, a lot of us are new, for the simple reason that we're tired of the status quo. We want change, we want good change, but we want affordable change. In the Clackamas County Republican Party, we've elected a new leadership, because we're tired of the old guard. There are so many new PCPs, we're coming out, we're going to be vocal, we're here, and we want to, we want to see good things happen. And in regards to the DEI thing, there are many laws to protect people already, we don't need more laws. The Supreme Court just ruled against discrimination in college. There's major, major companies that are getting rid of these, these programs because it's cost them too much, and basically, when you go woke, you go broke. So... So as taxpayers, you know, we don't want to spend our money on frivolous spending. You know, we're going broke. You can spend that money on better resources than needless programs when we already have laws to protect the people. You know, I found out that Clackamas County collects about a billion dollars per year from property taxes.
No.
Oh, that's whatever. Anyway, when you divide that by the 170,000 accounts, that's like 8,000-plus dollars per account. That's a lot. My brother-in-law pays like, I don't know, 3,000 a year in Missouri. So, you know, something's wrong here. So spend the money, but spend it on better uses. We can, I think we can agree on that.
You still have time, sir.
Well, that's all.
I do, go ahead and sit here. You mentioned a billion dollars in property taxes.
The revenues.
Yeah. Gary, would you please explain it?
It's approximately $155 million that come from property taxes, and it increases 3% to 4% each year.
Yeah, 3% to 4%. I think the next projection is about 2% increase, which is flat. Now, you may be confused, and it's really easy to get confused with government budgets. Our overall budget for all funds coming in, state, federal, and grants, is over a billion dollars, Gary, and how much is that?
The total county budget is $1.7 billion. Subtract $155 million, which is property taxes. Everything else is state or federal dollars, and some fees or fines for other services.
Those state and federal dollars usually have a catch to it, that it's mandated where we spend those money. So just wanted to let you know that. It's $155 million.
I'll do more digging then.
It's okay. You know what? If you need some information, send me an email, I'll give it to you.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
You bet.
Commissioner West.
Hold on. I'm going to agree with you, though regardless of the semantics of the numbers or whatever. I think most of us agree that in Oregon, our property taxes are just too high, period. And so, the gist of what you're saying is correct, even if the numbers were a little off. I appreciate you making that point.
Thank you. Up next, Renelle Moreau. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Renelle Moreau, Canby, Oregon. Conservative citizens of Clackamas County are supportive of those that have researched how DEI is being used as a political litmus test in hiring, firing, and promotion, fomenting reverse discrimination, bloating the budget, and to denounce and defund that type of public policy. Equality requires that all ideas get to compete in society and that those in power don't put their thumb on the scales to prevent the views that they don't like. The following are examples of other states enacted or proposed legislation against the divisive social construct of DEI. In Florida, Governor Ron DeSantis signed Senate Bill 266, a wide-ranging law that affects public college and university employment as well as DEI. DeSantis said at the bill signing, quote, "We are eliminating the DEI programs. We're going to treat people as individuals. We're not going to treat people as members of groups." This legislation, overhauled, required statewide core courses to now prohibit curriculum that teaches identity politics, or is based on theories that systemic racism, sexism, oppression, and privilege are inherent in the institutions of the United States. The states of Arizona, Iowa, Kansas, North Carolina, Missouri, Montana, Texas, North Dakota, and Oklahoma also have proposed legislation that would prohibit public entities from requiring employees to, quote, "engage in a diversity, equity, and inclusion program," to prohibit public colleges from requesting political loyalty tests, to prohibit the use of critical race theory rhetoric or other forms of political identity filters in hiring or promotion, and the use of state funding on DEI for critical race theory programs. Proposed legislation would prohibit requiring state employees to complete DEI-related training as a condition of employment, and that hiring cannot be based on anything other than merit. Clackamas County can ensure access to all its citizens without promoting or funding reverse discrimination and exclusion, which is the foundation of DEI. Clackamas County citizens deserve equality, not equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, John Mullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, John Mullen, I live in Oregon City. When I first got engaged with talking about the budget back in May, I became aware of the discussion about DEI. I was reluctant to come forward to talk about the budget because I've been retired for a number of years from Clackamas County. But the discussion that happened last weekend and has happened repeatedly since May is important to focus on, and I appreciate the fact that people have come forward to talk about it. When I was first in Clackamas County, I want to just say that these issues go way back, all of the issues about trying to deal with issues that come up. There was, in fact, at one time, a Human Relations Commission. I know this because I was the staff person to it. I was assigned by the commissioners at that time, Commissioners Schumacher, Groner, and Skoko. So I've seen a lot of county commissioners come and go. I've seen a lot of efforts come and go. But what I think is really important here is the fact that there's an opportunity now with the discussion that you have all had and hearing from the citizens, an opportunity to think about what's going to be right for Clackamas County. How are we going to move this discussion forward in a way that takes divisive rhetoric off the table and talks about the legitimate needs that people have? I happen to be a supporter of diversity, equity, and inclusion because I've lived the discussion in many, many iterations over my long career, and I continue to be engaged in it. I do recognize that one of the things that I also need to do is to listen to other people as well as putting forth my points of view. I've learned a lot from actually talking to a number of the commissioners here about your points of view and your thoughts about moving forward. I want to recognize your administrator, Mr. Schmidt, for first in initiating the discussion about DEI as an office. As he mentioned, it goes way back to the year 2000, but it goes back before that, as I mentioned, from my work here in Clackamas County. So really, what I'm asking the board and county commissioners to do is to continue to have this discussion and to solve the issues as best you can. But I also want to say that it's going to be important to engage the public in the future. I don't know how that's going to work. I basically stumbled on this discussion by accident because I was here to talk about the budget, but I'm now fully interested and engaged and interested in the discussion going forward. So please consider ways in which you can continue to engage the public in this discussion. Thank you, and I wish you all the best in your deliberation.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
John, I just wanted to thank you for coming today because we've been friends for a long time, and I've worked with you from the beginning when I was first a commissioner. And your kindness and your wisdom and your ability to cut through what to the chase of what we're really trying to do has always given me hope that we can move forward in this county where all of our citizens feel that they are respected and welcome. And it's interesting for me because I lived most of my adult life in Canby, Oregon, where all my kids were raised. And so I know that we have some folks from Canby here today, so welcome. And now I live in Lake Oswego, where I also am working on diversity, equity, and inclusion opportunities for people. And we know that when we started this, this was going to be divisive because hard conversations, it's difficult, and it is going to be divisive. But it doesn't mean that we treat each other with disrespect. It doesn't mean that we don't have an open forum for everybody to have an opportunity to express their opinion clearly, and I welcome this discussion. And I actually am impressed with folks today because this is a divisive conversation. It's hard, but we're all treating each other with decency and respect, and I learned that from you. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Up next, Rick Dodge. Excuse me, Commissioner West.
John, I wanted to just say really quick, Martha and I were talking about your activism, your work within the county, and she said to me, "John is like the county's conscience." And I said, "I appreciate him being our Jiminy Cricket, so don't stop, and we appreciate your voice in helping us guide through these tough conversations." So thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you. Please state your name, area of residence. You have three minutes.
I'm Rick Dodge. I live in Milwaukee, native Oregonian. I watched last Tuesday's meeting to get caught up, and I want to say to Commissioner West, what a brilliant fact-based final talk you did. Thank you for having the guts to do it, and why everybody doesn't have, doesn't agree with that is just beyond me. I am sick and tired of hearing the systematic racism issue that we have in our state, our country, our county, and I'm sick and tired of, I'm going to stick to my thing I'd hear, I'm going to get, now, here's, I lived through systemic racism in the '50s and '60s. In 1958, I was on the Lenz Little League baseball team, the boys' club next door, and we lived there. My friends were Japanese Americans whose parents just got out of the internment camps of World War II. Native Americans, who a few went back to the reservation and became great citizens, magistrates here in Warm Springs in South Dakota. My black friends to this day are still my friends. And the confusion for me was the fact that these are my friends. I go home and I saw the systemic racism issues from my parents and my grandparents. It was my generation that started to reverse that. And I'm proud of that. 1964, the Civil Rights Act passed, thanks to one of the greatest Americans that ever lived that we hardly hear about anymore, Martin Luther King Jr., probably because he advocated for nonviolence. I saw something here today that I just cannot believe I saw. And you talk about nonpartisan, and yet, I hope I don't get the same gesture. And that's fine. You're just showing what you're made of. I was there when affirmative action was in my workplace. You can look back into history to see how that worked out. In my opinion, it was a hit-and-miss situation. Check history, which most people aren't. I'm sick and tired of hearing about white supremacy, me being oppressed because I'm white. I never had slaves. I never lived in that culture, for crying out loud. My wife's grandma was a black lady that grew up in the Jim Crow South. When we were first married, we would go over to her house in the holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Please hear me out on this.
Rick, would you please send us an email? I'm trying to be consistent with everybody. I do want to hear your story.
She would powder her face.
Thank you very much.
Would she have to do that today? No.
Please send us an email. Up next, Kathy Heisey. Please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your service on the dais. My name's Kathy Heisey, and I'm a resident of Milwaukee, and I'm also the Zone One representative to the Board of Education for Clackamas Community College. Because it's relevant to my remarks, I will also tell you that I am the grandchild of a refugee whose family spoke no English when they arrived in America, and I'm a queer woman who, in 2008, was denied the opportunity to legally marry in this state. At Tuesday's Board of County Commissioners meeting, I heard a host of assertions that were misleading and obscure the facts. Your decision to restructure the DEI office is a bad one and runs counter to the will of this county. The county is in full compliance with federal and state titles, and the cost of the county's EDI office represents less than 1/10th of 1% of the general budget. This decision will not save the county money, nor will it improve compliance. It will end up costing taxpayers more as the county fails to meet federal requirements for grant monies and no longer receives those grants. It will cost taxpayers, as we see those who commit hate crimes, further emboldened. It will cost the county, as candidates for jobs and business owners who are historically marginalized, are from historically marginalized communities, do not apply to work for the county and establish their businesses elsewhere. I could go on. At CCC, we've committed to learning how to best support every single student. That means investing in diversity, equity, and inclusion work and in creating a DEI office. We're seeing tremendous results, and we're doing it while keeping CCC one of the single most affordable places to earn a degree anywhere in the metro area. Our first-of-its-kind, we think, anywhere in the country Spanish immersion program for early childhood education is taught entirely in Spanish, and the demand for this program outstrips our ability to provide spaces. Our graduates go on to serve families from all walks of life in our community, helping to address the childcare deserts in our county. The Clackamas County EDI Office and CCC's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office have collaborated to host multiple community events. These events were opportunities for everyone who attended to learn our shared history, better understand the day-to-day lived experiences of Black, Indigenous, and LGBTQ community members like me. Combined attendance at these events in the past 18 months is well over 2,000 people. The need is real, folks. To lose our partner in this work is a real blow. As a board member and as a taxpayer, I am bitterly disappointed in Tuesday's decision. You've made a mistake at a time when we have seen escalating reports of hate crimes in Oregon.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Up next, Kit Stavram. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kit Stavram. I live in Oregon City. I'm a business owner here as well. I just wanted to have some comments on the DEI initiatives and some other things that I've seen. Our Clackamas County, where we all live, I want us to, I want our county, our government, to focus on the things that are important to the citizens of Clackamas County. Now, as a business, I looked out at Clackamas County's website. I looked at all the priorities. A lot of them were spot-on. I didn't see one thing mentioned about DEI as a priority, which is fine with me. Some of the things I did see as priorities, I agree with, like, let's use taxpayer dollars effectively and efficiently. Let's promote fiscal responsibility. Let's focus on core services and what the taxpayers demand. And basically, we're looking for our government to help us with stopping crime, stop drugs, support our law enforcement, support their budgets, support our livelihoods and our businesses, help us with maybe lowering taxes and regulations so that we can get something done, so we can hire more people and give them more jobs. We'd like to, we'd like to help in ending homelessness, mental illness, and drug addiction. We're on your side there. People need to understand that drugs and mental health are the root causes of homelessness, not DEI. We must address them if we have any chance of helping those on the streets who are suffering. I'm all for funding wildfire preparation and wildlife as well. I think the 800 and some thousand dollars that you have, that they had budgeted for DEI would go a long way in helping these priorities. You know, I'm in a couple of different industries. I'm in construction industry, and I'm in the IT industry. And everybody, I went out to 10 different sites in the last month, and believe me, there's no issue with minorities having jobs. We have all kinds of races and people from all different places that are working everywhere, okay? DEI is a divisive racial ideology that really, I don't want to have any of my tax dollars, I don't want any of my businesses to have anything to do with. I don't want any of my businesses to have anything to do with. I just don't think it's a priority.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, Paul Fruin. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Paul Fruin. I'm from Wilsonville. And it's just a pleasure to be able to talk to you guys. And I appreciate you giving us full three minutes and allowing us to speak about this. I am here to speak against DEI as well. But my reasons have gone way beyond all the wonderful things that I've heard reasons for. And I thank you guys for your decisions on Tuesday as well. Very much appreciate that. My concern, when I first found out about the amount of money that's being spent on this, was more of a fiscal thing, as Kit just said. We're spending way, way too much money on government. So, this has gone way beyond just a DIE situation with me into the fact of looking at the entire county budget. And I think we need to do that. And maybe you should even allocate some of that $800-plus thousand dollars to doing forensic audits about exactly how money is being spent. I can't be critical of that yet because I haven't reviewed it to the depth that I think it needs to be reviewed. But when I did do a cursory review and found out that the amount of state and federal funding that comes to the county is, you know, those comes with strings, I'm sure, that probably include DEI and other things that I would disagree with. I'm an old white guy. My, I keep trying to convince my eight and 10-year-old grandchildren that that's not true anymore, but I guess a lot of people, you know, would consider that. I've lived in this county for over 45 years, and I just think we're spending way too much money. So, I'm going outside of the, just the DIE argument, but I also, I think that we really need to look at this. If we are receiving state and federal money that comes with ties on it that are contrary to what we believe, we need to not accept that money. And I know that's going to put a gasp in your hearts thinking, oh, my goodness, how could we, how could we not accept this money? Well, you could cut back on the amount of government that we actually have. So, that's what my testimony is about today, is just to encourage you to take a look at that and maybe even spend some money into looking deeper. Making sure that when there's a budget that comes out, that there is plenty of time to review that budget. A budget the size that you were talking about, Commissioner Smith, needs some real, real deep dives and looks into it, lots of time to look into it. And I'm not sure you guys had all the time that you needed to, to be able to take that through down to the level of specificity of how each dollar is being spent. Because I would bet that there's a lot of money being spent in this county, not just on DIE, but other things like that.
Thank you very much. Up next is Betty Brixon. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. While she's walking up, anybody else in the room who wishes to testify may put a card in the basket. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Betty, excuse me, my name is Betty Brixon. I live, I'm a 24-year resident of Clackamas County, a former teacher of English to folks whose first language is not English, and I live in the city of Portland. I wasn't prepared to speak today, but I was here on Tuesday, and I listened to the discussion. I just couldn't sit back there and not say a few things. So, appreciate you listening. I also have, like a few of you, Martha and Ben, I have an adopted child of color. I also observed the murder of Mr. Floyd, and it caused me to dig deep into my own beliefs and what's in that of those in our country. You can see I'm a little nervous. Anyway, I heard you say, Ben, on Tuesday, that DEI was a radical leftist ideology. Gosh, I don't feel that I'm a radical leftist at all. I am a former member of the Leaders of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Council, which we are, we are a group of volunteer residents of Clackamas County who gather, a very diverse group, lots of, there's white, old white ladies like me, there are African Americans, there are Hispanic folks, there are people with disabilities, Native Americans. We gather to talk about equality and equity in our county. We are not, I don't know anybody on that council who is a radical leftist ideologist. And, you know, here in Clackamas County, we have citizen councils that support every department, I believe. There are a couple dozen of them. And we're all volunteers from the community who care about particular issues, and we gather to support that department and to serve as advisors to the board, to you, to you five folks. Gary has come to our meetings. Our new county clerk has come to our meetings. Our former commissioners Fisher and Humbertson came to our meetings. I don't recall ever seeing any of you come to our meetings. And I really doubt that you would-
Thank you very much. And you can submit the rest of your comments by email if you'd like. Appreciate your testimony today.
I don't think you would vote to eliminate any department in this county-
Ma'am, I'm trying to be fair and equitable to everyone in the room. Thank you very much. Up next is Gloria, is it Mantes? I can't read your, please come forward, state your name. I can't read your writing. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Gloria Montes from Canby, Oregon. And I was not, I came last minute, had a cancellation, so I wasn't prepared. But after hearing what the comments from the woman from Clackamas County Community College, I wanted to, and I'm super nervous. I don't even know why.
You know what? We don't bite. So, just pull the microphone close and just say your piece.
Okay. So, anyways, after hearing your comments, I just felt a little bit called to come and say, say a little bit my piece. My husband and his family came in the mid-'70s on their way from Texas to Yakima. They ran out of money in Hermison, Oregon, eight of them in a car. And he didn't speak English. Someone told them about an empty hotel in the next town over in Stanfield. And they went there, set up. He started school in second grade. They're, they have all grown and done great and, you know, done well with their lives and, you know, been happy with the opportunity afforded, even though, you know, times were different. They did face some racism. They did find some, you know, things that happen and occur that we have grown and we've come and we've changed. Things are better. They're better. And my child, I live in Clackamas County because I was excited for the DLI program in Canby. We put our house on the market, Washington County, got moved. My daughter started kindergarten. And they've all three gone through the Canby school system with the dual-language immersion program is the part that was missing. And my oldest, my youngest, who are junior and senior this coming year. And I think it's just terrible that, as my kids are launching off into the world, that the thought even comes to me that I recognize that I think I'm glad they aren't white. It's a good thing they aren't white because the deck is getting stacked against someone because they are white in a lot of ways. And it should not be like that. And that's it. I mean, I'm just not, my thoughts aren't together that well, but thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no other cards in front of me. For the people in the room, we will now transfer to online testimony. Everett, do you have anyone online who would like to speak for three minutes?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Yes, I do have a list of registered participants, and we will begin with Esther Kim. Esther, you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Chair Smith and County Commissioners. My name is Esther Kim, and I work for the, I'm here today on behalf of the Oregon Health Equity Alliance. We are a regional health equity coalition that serves Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington Counties. First, I'm here to express OHE's full support of the July 6, 2023 letter signed on by over 780 community organizations, businesses, and individuals, calling for not only the continued funding of the Clackamas County Office of Equity and Inclusion, but an increased investment in this work. At the August 1, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners meeting related to the defunding of the Equity and Inclusion Office, many issues were raised, highlighting the complexity of the decision at hand. Questions about fiscal conservancy and responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars, concerns over compliance with federal and state funding specifically related to Title II, supporting effective instruction, and Title VI, the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Appreciation to Commissioner Savas, who offered some transparency to the challenges of compliance and plainly debunking the comparisons of equity and inclusion to affirmative action and fear mongering over its perceived insidious influence over school policies. These issues highlight contradictions in Clackamas County's own public commitment to equity and inclusion per the board website and county strategic plan. Gary Schmidt and Chair Smith at this very meeting reported the county budget as $155 million. And based on the information shared at the August 1 meeting, the Office of Equity and Inclusion annual allocation was $827,000, which accounts for less than 1% of the total county budget. The strategically-veiled framing of the overall budget does not accurately contextualize the investment, and we encourage further investigation of not only budgetary allocations, but the intention of how this information is being shared with the public and the potential contradictions with the county's commitment to transparency. As a health equity partner, OHE has experienced the direct results of Clackamas County's commitment to DEI work and its influence on the many offices that make up the county over the years of our relationship, in particular with public health. We trust our public health partners at Clackamas County because they've shown themselves to be trustworthy, committing to righting the historical and contemporary wrongs of systemic institutional and medical discrimination and lack of access to care for people most impacted by inequities. And that doesn't just include people of color. Equity benefits everyone. Abolishing white supremacy benefits everyone. Not acting and reacting from fear, hate, and avoidance of painful truths, like the threat of scarcity and dehumanization, benefits everyone. I can tell that everyone who's shown up today to testify is here because they love Clackamas County and they want Clackamas County to be a safe place to live, work, and play. And that won't happen as long as our leaders are spouting extremist, right-wing misinformation scripted by conservative meat tanks.
Thank you very much.
As a health equity-
Thank you very much. Esther, appreciate that. Up next?
Up next, we have Jasmine Kling. Jasmine, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Jasmine Kling, and I'm the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee Chair at Northwest Family Services, a nonprofit that serves Clackamas County residents. Northwest Family Services is a culturally responsive agency dedicated to empowering individuals and fostering stronger communities by addressing the social determinants of health. About 60% of our staff and people we work with identify as Latinx. At Northwest Family Services, we believe in the ripple effect of empowerment. One act of kindness, one life change can emanate and transform an entire community. We uphold the importance of having an Equity and Inclusion Office at Clackamas County so that all Clackamas County residents and staff can fairly be represented in policies, events, and all aspects the county initiates to serve its residents. There is great work being done in Clackamas County. At Northwest Family Services, we have witnessed the different barriers for people, for example, who have a disability or speak a different language. An Equity and Inclusion Office can continue to support the workforce of Clackamas County in creating resources and events that everyone can access. It can continue to be a safe place for your workforce to turn to with questions and guidance. Without an Equity Office, accessing basic resources throughout the county will be more difficult. I would like to share a story with you. My team worked with a mother in Clackamas County who could not speak English and had trouble accessing basic information and resources. This meant that she had to depend on her oldest child for translation. Who is there making sure that she has access to information in Clackamas County in her native language? There are people who have never had the opportunity to learn how to read. It is so important for people to be thinking about situations like this. This happens by having conversations and seeking out the needs of others so that everyone is included. The Office of Equity and Inclusion is the central investment critical to ensuring and welcoming safe and prosperous community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next?
Up next, we have Jane Littlefield. Jane, you have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Jane Littlefield. I live in Oregon City. I attended Tuesday's board meeting and listened to my commissioners' shared thoughts on equity and inclusion. I watched audience reactions. I reacted too. Many of us wore our team colors and brought signs. Which team is going to win? Spoiler, these meetings usually end in draws. I went to Safeway ride afterwards, and I really hoped I wouldn't run into someone wearing a shirt of a different color. Awkward. And then I thought about how that was like an awful takeaway from the board meeting. Here I was, freshly primed to make ignorant assumptions about someone in the produce section because of the color of their shirt. How sadly ironic. I was in the baking aisle when I remembered the book, "I Never Thought of It That Way", by Monica Guzman. The book explores how to find common humanity within political differences and distrust, two things I had just experienced at the commission meeting 15 minutes prior. The secret to finding common humanity is not trying to change minds or win. The secret is choosing to come together with openness to changing your own attitudes and bridging divides. The recipe to do this? Curiosity and listening for understanding. I admit, I am working on this. I'm sharing this anecdote because there are political differences and distrust around equity and inclusion in our county. Board of Commissioners, this is my request to you. Will you ensure community building and education around equity and inclusion that accounts for the polarized context in which we live? Our community deserves methods of engagement that cultivate curiosity and encourage coexistence, so we're not acting like two opposing teams. For working through complex topics, I don't think speeches at meetings and three-minute public comment periods are effective, helpful, or bridging. The Equity and Inclusion Office, whatever their future branding, are the folks to facilitate community building and education around these complex topics. And they are complex topics. Let's all acknowledge that. Equity and inclusion are not two-sided issues where each team can be simplified into singularly representative, fully-aligned opposing viewpoints. These topics are fascinating kaleidoscopes of human experiences, beliefs, understanding, journeys of learning, willful ignorance, all sorts of information and motivations, and dignity. Humans are complex, curious creatures, after all. Thanks for listening. Please follow through for our community. I'm cheering for Team Clackamas.
Thank you. Everett, who's next?
Up next, we have Gloria Ochoa-Sandival. Gloria, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. Chair Smith and members of the Clackamas County Commission, my name is Gloria Ochoa-Sandival. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on behalf of Unite Oregon's Clackamas County Chapter and Directors, Marion Powell and Anessa Hartman. Our organization is led by Black, Indigenous, people of color, immigrants, and refugees, rural communities, and people experiencing poverty. Excuse me. On Tuesday, our members heard outrageous remarks made by Commissioner West in regard to the Clackamas County Equity and Inclusion Program, which I'll be quoting throughout my testimony. We don't agree with the commissioner's harmful comments and want to clarify the misuse of many of his words, so that the next time something damaging is said, it can at least be said accurately. First, not all Clackamas County residents feel welcome. There are two residents in particular that are also members at Unite Oregon. They wanted a comment today, but one felt scared to speak to Commissioner West, and the other does not speak English and has not been offered any interpretation resources by the county to testify. Second, equity and inclusion is not a quote- resources by the county to testify. Second, Equity and Inclusion is not a "ideology" that manipulates the very dark emotions of guilt and shame within Americans. I know that is factual because Americans in our organization do not feel this way. For example, I, an American Latina, born and raised in Oregon, do not feel this way. He used the broader word "American" to identify exclusively with white Americans experiencing white fragility, which would be an incorrect use of the word. This may be a result of West's racial colorblindness, which has made it difficult for him to see differences in people. Therefore, he has begun to generalize experiences of a broader group to his individual experience. Third, the example of making ADA accommodations for a person with a disability is in fact not equality, because it is not equal nor the same accommodations provided to people without disabilities. This act is actually called equity, the quality of being fair and impartial, or as West said, "leveling the playing field." Commissioner West, you have directly benefited from equity and inclusion within your very own family, but it seems like it may no longer be important to you now that you have retained power. And finally, "I literally can't. I don't know that person. I can't find that person. We've made progress. We've done good in so many ways," is not a factual statement of the county's experience and not how we survey our communities. I encourage you, Commissioner West, to spend time in community and speak up on behalf of your district, not your personal vendettas. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next?
Up next is Emily Lowry. Emily, go ahead and unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Emily Lowry. I'm a resident of Milwaukee, Oregon. I regret that I can't be at today's meeting in person, so I'm very grateful for the access to join virtually. I am glad to be included so that my voice can be heard and my testimony entered into record. I'd like to address comments made by one of our elected Commissioners during Tuesday's Issues and Updates meeting, and also beseech County Administrator Gary Schmidt as he brainstorms the restructuring and renaming of the 23-year-old Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, eliminating county jobs, reducing our ability to stay in compliance of federal and state law, and costing our taxpayers money. Safety and more all over semantics. It is disappointing that Commissioner Scholl has been so vehemently against inclusion in our county by his own words. I feel he was disingenuous during Tuesday's meeting when he cited the 14th Amendment as reasoning to defund the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I don't know how safe the community can feel when such an elected official has publicly gone on record disparaging minority members of our own county based on, in his words, "the immutable traits they possess: their religion, race, and national origin." He posits that the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion didn't serve the entire county. I disagree. When a house is on fire, you don't turn the hose on the entire neighborhood. You put out the fire of the house that is on fire. And you don't defund the fire department or restructure it and rename it the Water Brigade because your house is still dry. This office has done important work, and if you want to shift their focus, do that. Don't just defund it because one group has needed it for longer. County Administrator Schmidt is right. The work of the office needs to and will be done regardless. And just so it's on the record, I have no problem with my taxes spent on ensuring a working county for all community members, even and especially if they don't look or live like me. Please don't lose the momentum of education, compliance, and the important work this office provided. Please don't stop serving those who need it most. Thank you. I yield the rest of my allotted time.
Thank you. Up next?
Up next is Tim Smith. Tim, please go ahead and unmute, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Tim Smith. I'm from Wilsonville. Yeah, I have, I want to address three things of three Commissioners. The first one is Commissioner West, and then Chair Smith, and maybe a small thing with Martha Schrader. My remarks so much changed with what I've written down after I've heard all these things. Commissioner West, I couldn't commend you more. Last week's message was stellar. I mean, to this day, I'm rocked by your work, hard work. You showed great integrity, great constitution. Just like what we talked about before, it's not the color of your skin, but the color of your character, and you displayed it remarkably last week. Mr. West, I honestly didn't really know much about you. I thought you got in easy. You didn't win this election. Sonia Fisher lost it. So you had to prove yourself, and you did last week. And I couldn't give you the highest of praise. There was a war party last week by some woman named, I can't remember it, but she had a war party against Mr. Scholl and picked up where she left off last year. We got a character assassinated, and there was about five, four others. It was a war party. But Mr. Scholl got off the hook because of you. You were lambasted by the very group that should be supporting you. Chair Smith had to rebuke that one individual that jeered you like no other. And you displayed great character. You didn't lambast. You let them finish, and you just picked up where you left off. Your body language was on target. You won my vote next year, or next election. I'm a woke-ism. I'm a white guy. I'm also discriminated against. I'm a born-again Christian, that kind of Christian. You know what the Bible stands for? Morals that we are against. And I won't go into that, but I'd still vote for you because you showed character. You are an example. Chair Smith, I have some empathy for you. You are standing alone there. There's only one chair. And last year, I felt sorry for you because of Martha, because of Commissioner Schrader, and Sonia Fisher, who's no longer here. Those two stood on the curb side and campaigned against Mr. Scholl to have him removed from his office. And the only one standing today is Mr. Scholl, and Sonia's gone.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You can send the rest of your testimony by email.
Up next, we have Elizabeth Carney. Elizabeth, go ahead and unmute, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm a resident of Oregon City. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm going to keep it short because I know we've been going on for a while here. It seems to me clearly when it comes to matters of equity and inclusion, Clackamas County residents have mixed perspectives and experience. I believe that if you stop funding the Office of Equity and Inclusion, or funding equity inclusion in some way, you will be depriving the county of employees who have the expertise to help us have the challenging conversations we clearly need to have in order to better understand one another and to move forward together as a diverse community, which will benefit everyone. Redistributing this work or using things like training videos, which I believe were mentioned at the last meeting, I think are distractions from the real issue, like putting a Band-Aid on a broken leg. So I ask you to please maintain funding for equity inclusion so that we can work through these issues as a community and become stronger at the end of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next?
Up next, we have Bill Weir. Bill, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Weir, Damascus. I would like to see EID defunded. On January 13, 2021, Administrator Schmidt handed a letter to this commission that had the signatures of all 22 departments yet. The statement of that letter was as follows: "In all the power dynamics of the employees here in the county, those of us at the top of that structure have the most responsibility to raise our voice. We respectfully call on you to condemn the comments of any Commissioner who works against equity and inclusion of all our residents, and to prioritize education recommitment of the current Board of Commissioners to the county's policies on anti-racism without delay. We believe Mr. Scholl should immediately resign his position." What started as an email from a Democratic Party official morphed into a political weapon to justify the taking over power. The administration was telling the commission that EID was to be prioritized in all county policies. Instead of the commission duly-elected by the people to set policy, they would now be directed by the whims of taxpayer-paid county employees. Three of you that sit here today agreed with that letter instead of demanding due process for the condemned. This is power dynamics, and it's dangerous. Mr. Schmidt has told the commission that he's working on a plan to improve EID, but I submit that he's the wrong person to do it. EID is his baby. He has allowed it to become what it is, divisive, not in the best interest of our county's population as a whole. He refuses to place the meetings of LETIC online for the video library so people can see what they talk about. EID is his tool for his highly-charged partisan views. Any number of LETIC members believe they have the power to vet candidates for the Office of Commissioner, that they have the right to publicly condemn an individual without demanding evidence and investigation. The only power EID has is what Mr. Schmidt lets them have. He's never explained publicly or been asked by this commission what his role was in the attempted coup on January 13, 2021. As he handed the letter of January 13, he claimed not to know what to do. This was incompetence or being part of the attempted overthrow. I want EID to be defunded. I'd like to see a blue ribbon committee of a cross-section of residents to be formed to find a different course in how EID mandates should be implemented through the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next?
Up next, we have Elvis Clark. Elvis, go ahead and unmute, and you have three minutes.
And could you please say your name, each person? It's more helpful. Go ahead.
Elvis, can you unmute, say your name? Thank you.
Okay. Elvis Clark, Philly, Milwaukee. I want to thank Commissioner West for his well, very well-researched critique of equity, inclusion, and diversity this past Tuesday. I also thank Commissioner Scholl for broaching the subject and stopping the county from sleepwalking through DEI. And that's all I have to say. Thank you all for that discussion.
That was short. Yes, up next?
Chair, that is the end of my list. If you have not spoken yet today and would like to, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public testimony portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share good news of the work of our county employees, but in the interest of time, I'll just share an informational update for the public, and that is, starting next Monday, August 7, there will be increased security in the county's two main buildings on the Red Soils campus, the Public Services Building, which we're in right now, and the Development Services Building across the way. This will impact people who visit the building, including members of the public, including members who come to attend your business meetings. So starting on Monday, all public visitors and employees must either show their employee badge, or visitors will be given an access badge so that they may access the elevators and the stairwells. There'll be a check-in at the main lobby, and then the badge will be turned in when the person leaves the building. So please give a few extra minutes if you're coming to a county building, starting on Monday, August 7. This plan has been in place for the last two years. So this is to protect members of the public as they visit this building and our employees who work in the building. So if anyone has questions who is listening to this, they're welcome to reach out to me directly, and I'm happy to answer them. That's my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Gary. Now we'll move on to Commissioner Communication. First, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Appreciate all the comment today and in weeks past, and most recently on this particular topic. I can honestly say that, you know, if, you know, if we can possibly agree that there is no more if, you know, if there is no more discrimination in this world, or in this country, or in this county, maybe our work is done, but unfortunately, I cannot say that. Discrimination is real. It's still present, and we have a responsibility as a county and employer, and a unique responsibility as county commissioners, to make sure that the staff and public are protected as best we can. We have to abide by the laws, the state, federal laws. So we're in this tough place. You know, I certainly can see how things have been more, in the last few years, more politicized than they have been in the past, on both sides, if you want to call it that. I think there's multiple sides of this, depending on where you stand. There's been a lot of viewpoints that have not been expressed today. Were not even expressed on Tuesday, and I think some of the real-life experiences and issues that are happening today, whether it's locally, or in the state, or in this country, you know, it's a broad, broad, essentially, I was just going to say, it's a broad discussion. It's not an easy one to talk about without really taking the time and the consideration to factor in what it is we know and what it is that we don't know. You know, I don't know everything. I certainly don't. As I mentioned the other day, I'm 67 years old. I have got my experiences. I grew up in a racially mixed area, family as well. So, you know, I've seen a lot of things. And I probably have seen, I can honestly say, I've seen more, more people either abused, beat, or killed that were either of racial, they were not white, basically, either black, brown, Asian. I saw it. And, you know, I also, the comment earlier today, I don't know who made it, but about, you know, that people maybe are more responded to if they're homeless and people of color. Most people, and I've done a lot of homeless counts, I rarely see a person who is not white that is homeless. Most people I see are, whether I'm standing in Portland, or whether I'm, you know, here, most people that are homeless are white people. Of course, we're in a state where we're dominantly white, but discrimination is still here. It's not solved. And I respect everyone's opinion and people's experiences, which you all have your experiences. I don't know what those are, but we're not here because, we're not here today because the problem is solved. We have, we're here because, and we have lawsuits, claims. We have it, not just in Clackamas County as far as the government, but, you know, issues in other jurisdictions, in cities in Clackamas County and in the region, where there's still discrimination out there. And I think really, the core of it, as I tell people, the practical and the applicable, not the extreme viewpoints, but the practical aspects of what we do and what DEI is designed to do, the laws that we have to abide by for the grants, you know, we talked about today about how much of our budget is general fund. Most of it is state and federal funding. And if you don't abide by state law, you, we're not eligible for those dollars. We can forego, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and perhaps a lot of people in this room think that we should. We just forego that. But at the end of the day, the lawsuits and everything else, by the way, are also costing us a lot of money. They're costing us more than $800,000. So be mindful of that. I'm sure not everyone's going to appreciate my comments, but, you know, I can back that up with facts. So, and just one other reminder, there's a lot more that really we ought to be focusing on that you shouldn't unite us, as opposed to talking about what really divides us, but that's just an unfortunate situation we have, at least presently. But there's a lot more about us that are unique, and, I'm sorry, I misspoke, a lot more about us that are common, though we are unique as individuals. So, Chair, that's all I have to say today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Scholl, you're up next.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. I'd like to clarify something on property taxes. The county assessor estimates that the total property tax countywide will come to a little over $980 million this November. But of that, only about $160 million will come to the county for the general administration of this county to include the Sheriff's Department. Most of your county property taxes will go to the state to fund schools. Some of it will go to fund fire districts, and some of it will go to other levies. For example, For example, you might have a new school you're paying for in your area of the county that will be on your property taxes. But again, only a small amount of those taxes actually come to run this county. So, as a member of the Board of Commissioners and as a member of the Budget Committee, I will always look for anything I can find to save the taxpayer a few dollars, and they all add up, a little bit here, a little bit there, and pretty soon, you got millions of dollars. America must remember its history. As Americans began the business of reconstructing their country after a bloody civil war, they also reconstructed the Constitution. The Thirteenth Amendment abolished slavery, but still more work was needed to ensure equality of all people. The Fourteenth Amendment enhanced the civil rights of all citizens, and the Fifteenth Amendment guaranteed the right to vote regardless of race. Together, these three amendments, known as Reconstruction Amendments, declared a new birth of freedom and equality in the United States of America. With the Fifteenth Amendment, the constitutional reconstruction was complete. That date was February 1869. But America forgot its history. For the following 95 years, some state legislatures still passed Black Code laws, also known as Jim Crow laws, that continued to segregate Americans based on immutable traits. Then, an incident which lit the fuse of awareness occurred. On an April morning in 1955, a courageous American named Rosa Parks was arrested and fined for refusing to yield her bus seat to a white man. That evening, the pastor at Dexter Avenue Baptist Church in Montgomery, Alabama, a man named Martin Luther King Jr., began to speak out against this segregation. The Montgomery Bus Boycott that occurred and continued until December 1956 was the first large-scale demonstration against segregation since February of 1869. Finally, in July of 1964, the Civil Rights Act passed prohibiting discrimination based on color of skin, race, gender, or the nation of origin of a citizen. Now, America saw real change happen in the following decades. Race in America became less of an issue. People grew closer together. There was a feeling of brotherhood and friendship, and race issues were replaced with respect. Race did not seem to be a big issue, yet America was still not perfect, as we continued to have issues that needed improvement. But then, America began to forget its history once again. We began to see the rise of race and immutable traits as being factors in decision-making. Today, America is feeling the angst and friction again in the struggle we see in an imperfect society. America needs to reflect on our history and where we have come from, and remember the work and sacrifice Americans of the past have made to create a nation in which every one of us can truly live out our full potential as individuals and as a united people. We cannot fix discrimination with another form of regressive discrimination. We must look at each other and not just see immutable traits, but see each other in admiration of the unique qualities of character, capability, and unlimited potential of the individual. We now must achieve the equality that Rosa Parks desired. As we understand history, we can make better decisions. We can understand the importance of respecting each other. We can create real unity, solidarity, and social cohesion. EID is not the way forward to create this cohesion. We must believe in our American lessons learned. Now is a time for equality for all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Sho. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
So, colleagues, I received a call last night from Mayor Joe Buck of Lake Oswego, and back on July 21, 2023, he sent us a letter from the city council. It is my home city, although I lived most of my adult life in Cambie, Oregon, where I raised my children and had a farm. Now, I have a little home here, and as a courtesy to him, because he asked me to do so, I'm going to read the letter that we have been sent. Dear Honorable Chair Smith and Commissioners, recently, all members of the Lake Oswego City Council signed onto a community letter requesting continued funding of the county's Office of Equity and Inclusion. The action is notable since our council itself represents a wide spectrum of political beliefs, which is illustrative of the diverse makeup of Clackamas County's largest city. While diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts can become overly politicized in the national media, our city council focuses on fostering a welcoming and inclusive community where all people have the opportunity to thrive and have equitable access to city services. When we say that we strive to be a welcoming and inclusive community, it means that we are serving residents of all abilities and all backgrounds, residents that make up a range of incomes, races, cultures, ages, spoken languages, and more. The equitable inclusion is seen with our residents serving in planning and advisory roles for city decision-making, as well as our focus to internally to foster a workplace culture, building diversity and inclusion to serve our residents. None of this happens by accident. It takes community building, capacity expansion, support for our staff, and robust engagement to ensure the needs of every resident are being met. Through this work in Lake Oswego, we are ensuring that our recruitment for city advisory boards attracts applicants from all corners of the city, that our outreach invites participation from those who may not be inclined to interact with their local government, that city programming and infrastructure serve residents of all ages and abilities, and that our city workforce has the internal support necessary to thrive. We have created a calendar of year-round cultural events that highlight the variety of traditions present in our small community and create a true sense of home for all residents. We are actively supporting the infrastructure needed to serve our most vulnerable residents. There are numerous changes we have implemented to continue moving down the path of ensuring that we are speaking to and serving all residents of the city, which takes intentional planning, outreach, and resources. In a county of many small cities and a large share in unincorporated areas, we must all work together to continue growing these efforts. Such work not only creates an environment supporting existing residents, but also attracts new residents to our county and serves as a magnet for businesses seeking the broad human talent and experience at the center of any successful enterprise. There are no reputable business consultants that will tell you the path to success is paved through single-perspective decision-making. The same is true for local government, which is even more imperative since our decisions impact the safety, health, and welfare of every resident. Please join us in seeing the broad benefits these efforts are having for all county residents, for the strength of our community fabric, and for the health of our bottom line. There are extreme partisan positions and narratives on both sides, distracting from the simple heart of the matter, the imperative to create an environment response to the widespread needs of the entire county. The Office of Equity and Inclusion plays a critical role in these efforts and should continue to be fully supported. Thank you, all of you, for your work and service to our county. Sincerely, Mayor Joe Buck, Counselor Ali Afghan, Counselor Trudy Corrigan, Counselor Messine Mabup, Counselor Aaron Raft, Counselor Rachel Verdic, and Counselor John Wendlin. And the point, I did tell Joe last night that I would do him the courtesy of reading this letter, but I want to point out that their commission is made up of Democrats, Republicans, independents, and all of those folks came together as one of our largest city representatives to ask us to continue this work. And what I really agree with in this letter is that it's becoming too highly politicized, where we are being divided against one another. And so, I'm going to give you a quick example from Cambie of what I think is some of the best equity work that I've seen in a long time, and I believe this, and all of us believe it, because together, we had a unanimous vote to give $600,000 of ARPA dollars, government money, government money, to the Cambie Center, El Centro de Cambie, which is serving people in your community, and that $600,000, and you know where they are on Second Street, and I know where Second Street is, because I, as I said, lived there as well. And so, what do they do when I say that they're doing equity work? Well, they work with people that need a hand up. A no-cost membership, food and clothing for your family once a week, that's under their word, thriving together. Education, after-school tutoring, reading mentors, and tools for learning. Other services, printing, laundry, lunch, and emergency clothing and food. Suicide prevention, you are not alone, need to talk, call 988 for immediate help. Weekly no-cost shopping for members, emergency food available, dental appointments, and vision vouchers, and that's even just a small bit of what they do. Now, they are a faith-based organization, ladies and gentlemen, that we collectively decided needed to expand because of the services they were providing in that Cambie community. And they serve Hispanic families, they serve African-American families, they serve white families, it doesn't matter. But if these people, if people are in need and need help, so they can become participating citizens, essentially, in their community, that's what's important. And I don't, one of my themes is, I've said this before with my colleagues, I serve with who I am elected to serve with, with no ranker and no partisan particularities. My other principle is that not left, not right, but forward. So, I don't look at it that way. I see what this organization is doing and other organizations that we have supported as equity work, because then people can learn, they can get a job, they can go up the ladder of economic prosperity. So, I would say to all of us, why don't we start thinking about this in different terms as a way to build community and to really look at what it takes to be equitable, equity, because then these folks are on the level playing field with the rest of us to succeed as citizens of Oregon and citizens of our United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Next, Commissioner West.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I know some people had to leave because we're during the day, and a lot of people have jobs and other things to do and kiddos to take care of, so thank you for taking the time. It is greatly appreciated. It's funny that some, maybe some that were in this room, might just see me as a white guy with power. But God, that just limits, anytime you look at anybody in that lens, it just limits the richness that every individual brings to our community. Sure, I'm white, it's just a facet or footnote of who I am. Same thing about me being gay, it's a footnote. There are so many more things in all of our lives that we contribute on the daily, annually, in our communities that are much more significant than that. I just really want to make sure that Clackamas County doesn't do diversity only on skin pigmentation and homogeneity of thought of the orthodoxy of what we see often in Oregon, but we allow a wide variety of ideas, values, and distinct personalities to come and make us better. Clackamas County is doing that. In September, we're having a Clackamas County Recovery Summit. Why? Because the uniformity of thought around addiction, homelessness, and mental health issues has not worked and has been an objective failure in this region. But to chart a new path, we needed some new ideas. We needed other thought leaders to come help us, do it a different way, not the Portland way in Clackamas County. That's the diversity that we need. Nobody is blinking an eye about language services. Nobody is blinking an eye about handicap spaces or spaces that are accessible to those with disabilities. Nobody is blinking an eye about outreach to every corner of this county to make sure people have equal access and playing fields are level. Nobody. Nobody's made that argument, not in the red T-shirts, not in the green T-shirts, but everybody wants equal access in Clackamas County. But I will not be party to clawing at the painful scars of the past to heal current divisions. You know, my testimony of who I am as a man stands in contrast to the worldview, which I tried to make clear yesterday, that informs the parts of DEI that are quite divisive, and those thought leaders that are always promoted within our community, within that DEI work. But sometimes, we get confused and caught up in Orwellian words that are just full of euphemisms, but when you look behind the curtain, you see that these ideologies are actually quite divisive. You know, it wasn't hard to hear a lot of unifying comments today either. There's a lot in Mayor Joe Buck's letter that I agree with, and there's probably more that we can fight common ground on than we disagree on, and I appreciate that letter, even though it may be coming from a different perspective. I, my story stands in contrast. You know, I'm a sixth-generation Oregonian. I grew up in North Portland, a very blue-collar family. We didn't have a lot, but we were loved, and we had our three squares. My dad worked really hard, extra jobs, to make sure that the, that those ends were meet at the, at the end of every month. You show up, you work hard, you show up in school, you show respect, you take care of others in your community, you bring the casserole to the somebody that just had surgery down the street. If there's a woman, a moral widow, who lost her husband, needs her lawn mowed, Ben, then you go down there and mow her lawn. Those are the values that aren't about this culture, or that culture, or dominant culture of this, or that, or how we pit one another against each other. Those are good human values, community values, that we should all support. So, I got thrust into politics in 2014. I was one of Oregon's gay marriage equality plaintiffs. I was one of Oregon's gay marriage equality plaintiffs. We were adopting our little boy from Oregon's broken foster care system. And at that time, I didn't know what I was getting myself into totally, but I knew that I wanted to make sure that Jay and our family had equal protection under the law. And then when he sat next to another kid in school, that his family, under the eyes of the law, was just as valuable as anybody else's family. And that two parents are better, and they provide better social outcomes and better outcomes for young people and children than, than other, than another way. And so we fought for marriage equality. And then we won in two thousand and fourteen. Under the Fourteenth Amendment is what we sued. We won in federal court. And then a couple weeks later, our adoption finalized with our son Jay. You know, if I had to take some of this talking points that I found in county emails that did hearken to some of the most divisive pieces of DEI, and I had to implement that in my family, nothing could have been more toxic between a father-and-son relationship, that somehow inherently, whether I could or could not control it as a, as a white man, that I had some privilege over him, whether I liked it or not, and I had to atone for my oppression to my son who was being oppressed. That would have been toxic to my son and to me, who needed to be a family and overcome trauma. That would have added to the trauma. Today, you know, we won that fight in court, and I'm glad that every loving family in Oregon can marry because of that fight. But the truth is, is we're going to have a lot of fights moving forward because racism and bigotry is an issue of the heart, and there will always be wicked people with a heart issue. So when we need to, we still have to strive to the bigger ideals. Mark Scholl, Commissioner Scholl, you spoke to some of those today. We have to still strive for the bigger ideals that make us better and remember who we are. And so that's why I think this is an important conversation that we have as a community. I want us to be about ideas in Clackamas County, not ideology. And when there is a premisses ideology that has gone out of control, it must be called out. I'm going to close with this. We have seen some of the fruit of this ideology in Oregon that has been informing the actions and policies. Measure One Ten was informed through racial inequities. We must have Measure One Ten and decriminalize drugs. And alls I see now is people literally dying in our streets, human despair. As a nurse, I know what it was like to care for those people. That is not, that is the fruit of this agenda. Under the same ideology, we saw defund the police for racial inequities. And then we watched City of Portland burn and be rioted for a hundred days straight, all under race essentialism and equity this and equity that. That was the fruit of that ideology. We have seen, we had to move, why did we move to Clackamas as a family? Because the schools were failing and the city wasn't safe, but they pretended and gaslit us that we were working on equity issues. We came to Clackamas for Safe Haven in my family and found it. Today, I'm a Clackamas County Commissioner, marriage equality plaintiff, naval officer, a cardiology nurse because Clackamas County believed in me to serve them. I was not held back. I made my case, I engaged in my community, and they chose me to represent them. This is a good place to live. Everyone has his flaws, but this is a good place to call home. So with that, I'll close because I'm long-winded. But I want to make sure that we, everybody knows, we will be diligent in making sure that this is a place where all ideas, all walks of life, regardless, left or right, have a place to voice those opinions and make Clackamas County a better place. And we value that diversity. We don't need uniformity. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl, excuse me, Commissioner West. I'm not going to repeat what the Commissioner said today. We'll be here forever if I do. But I want to thank the citizens who came forward and used your wonderful professional behavior and comportment that we got through this meeting easily than maybe some meetings in the past. That was very generous of you, and thank you for treating everyone in the room with respect. I'm going to change the topic a little bit because, you know, this subject will not always define us. The Board of County Commissioners had a town hall this week, and the topic was fire protection. And we still feel those scars and the horrific wildfire of September twenty-twenty. We have come a long ways in this county, and I believe in the state of Oregon, in preparedness, communications, and wildfire prevention somewhat. And I say somewhat because the people who live in these rural communities, regardless of the emergency, need to understand you must prepare yourself. You must prepare your outer spaces. You must have at least a week's worth of water and food without electricity. You must have batteries, get cellphone charges that are ancillary to your cellphone, or if you can afford a generator. You must prepare for yourself because government will not always be here to save you when you want it. Government will eventually arrive, but maybe not in the timeline that you would want. So that's what we've done at our home. I can live probably for a month without electricity at my home because we've taken extraordinary steps to make sure that would happen. If, we had many, many links on what to do. You can get emergency notifications on your cellphone, and I've already received two this summer, and they're quite loud. You can't miss them. There's also apps you can download. You can watch a wildfire in real time. You can get weather reports on prevailing winds. If you're a weather junkie like I am, I have about five weather apps on my phone, maybe six, that do different things. Yes.
Consolidate.
Yeah, we can consolidate. Or they all do something different. Thank you for that. Any more information on the important links that were offered up at our town hall meeting can be sought at bcc@clackamas.us, and it has a whole variety of information available to you. Please download that. Commissioner Schrader and I serve on our new courthouse art committee. Yes, we will have art at the courthouse. However, it won't be paid for by taxpayers, Rick Dodd, you can be certain of that. We are developing a plan. We will be raising funds from the private sector. And anyone who wants to donate, excuse me, donate on that. We'll be launching a campaign soon. Hopefully, we will be at the county fair where anyone can donate to the art on that. The art will be all-inclusive, folks from Clackamas County. And I have asked specifically for some culturally, natural resource-oriented pieces, at least one piece of art that's reflective to really most people in Clackamas County. Also, we are building the courthouse, a brand-new courthouse, without raising your property taxes. I believe that's very important. We were able to do that because we did a deep dive on our budget. Excuse me. Paul Fruin, your remarks regarding the budget did not fall on deaf ears. I'm kind of a little bit of a budget hawk. When I was in the legislature, I served many, many terms on ways and means where from eight in the morning to five at night, that's all I did was government budgets. And it was not a pleasant experience for me, but I learned a lot. And you say we need to do a further deep dive. Well, how did you know? Yes, we are. We are continuing the budget process. The assumption that we just pass the budget and quit, you didn't say that, but that is not accurate. We're continuing to look, I am, line item by line item by line item of all the budgets, remember, all the budgets. Because I believe there is still some wasteful spending of our taxpayers' dollars. And I also believe just because you work for a government does not also give you the ability to spend money as you wish. And so we're continuing with that. We are the best stewards of your money in the small amount of money that we have control over. And as I explained further, it's a hundred and fifty-five million dollars of general fund. And when Commissioner Scholl said the overall taxpayer money that came in is nine hundred and eighty million, which is, goes to what the gentleman said of one billion is correct, but that money goes out the door as fast as it comes in. So our real general fund money is about a hundred and fifty-five million. Budgets are very important to me personally, as well as to this group. So we're continuing on that vein. Any other comments? I don't see any. I want to thank you all for coming today. I want to thank you all for listening. See, no further business before this commission. We are adjourned.